Jason, would you lead us in flag, please?
I pleasure to be here, the two of you, of the United States. And to repurpose for which is names, one nation, under God, end of this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, sir. All right, Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us, and we ask that you lead us and guide us in the decisions that we have to make and provide this community with what is good. We ask this in your name, amen. All right, we can start meeting now. Got one coming, Nita? Got one coming? All right, um, we'll call Sarah.
Counselor Howard?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Watson?
Here.
Mayor Protemtagala? And Mayor Becker?
Here.
Quite these, um, councilmen's dollar excused.
Yes.
A forum is declared, and Mayor Protemstallad is.
Danny? And we have no modifications to the agenda?
No modifications.
Thank you. Approval of consent agenda, minutes from regular meeting from July eighteenth, twenty twenty four, review and approval of accounts payable.
Counselor Howard?
Well, she got to make the motion first.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second it. Just for that young lady.
You're doing fine, Sarah. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes, regular meeting from July eighteenth, twenty twenty four, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Sarah?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve. Consent agenda.
You're doing fine.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, citizen comments and special presentation, citizen comments, said, Council, welcome, you're in scheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes, Council will not take action at this same meeting. State your name and write your name on that paper, please, sir.
And we got his name. I'm pleased for your time and here to quickly speak, uh, I decided here through management, please misconduct, I think, kind of, uh, leading on towards, um, before I write something and leave it for the new chief to consider, I just wanted chance to speak to Montevista, it's my only form of protest. Um, what has been done by the officers here, uh, at Montevista, when I saw them concerning my views that happened here as a kid, dealing with Alamosa, of course, and coming from a, you know, victims' rights were violated, among others, even in Montevista dealt with Lonzo P. Um, I then tried to communicate with Ann Kelly, and she's just very dismissive, so this is my only other voice of protest. Um, I've been chasing other ends, including writing, uh, the Missouri, uh, assemblies of God, the headquarters, and, uh, been forced to kind of talk to Gene Rin, Rin Kuhn, again, uh, for the Colorado Assembly Scott. And, uh, it's been frustrating, nothing but lies from them, uh, seen a lot of people use Jesus's name for many things, and trust, but I'm not mean. It's a, it's a manipulative tool, so I think what I'm here to say today is that I've struggled, I've had deprivation of my rights, uh, injustice for all doesn't always mean injustice for all, there's a lot of people who are made purposely weaker. Unfortunately for me, it was the church who chose to make me weaker, because I'm rather intelligent, um, teachers have proven this. In seventh grade, I was gonna go to the state fair for the, uh, science fair, however, I was being disciplined for things I didn't even do. And signs about the church too, just being blind, just outspoken, but parents decided, yeah, you, you had the privilege to go, you know, my science teacher told me in seventh grade, like, oh, the judges looked at it and said, I would have gotten a ribbon if not first place, hadn't been there to talk about the stars and the universe and stuff like that, that I have to, but I was being disciplined. So there's deprivation of rights, people are made weaker, and, and justice for all doesn't seem true to anyone, so nor does the Jesus from others. And if that's true for you, that's great, um, I know that new chief kind of respects that too, so I'll challenge him with my voice to him, and I'll see what he has to say, so I appreciate your little tiny here, got some things I must attend to this evening, so I hope you guys have a good meeting and, uh, do all your nervous and stuff, it was really fascinating, appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
No.
Okay, we will move on to scheduled appearances. Charles Filman, update information on the trees of the golf course.
That part to do with two bachelor verse.
Yeah.
Thanks again for giving me a spot on the today's agenda. For the record, my name is Charles Philman, Jr., and as you recall, at your meeting on June twentieth, I presented a petition signed by over a hundred citizens. The petition had two goals, to preserve two cottonwood trees shading the number two T at the Montevista Golf Course, while also preventing damage to the adjoining running track on the high school grounds from cottonwood tree sap. Today, I report to you that we have succeeded in the first goal, but have not successfully accomplished a second. To be specific, I asked the tree board member Kirby Self to seek out a tree specialist to examine the trees and assess their condition. Kirby arranged for Colorado Forest Service employee Sam Scavo to examine the core of the trees and provide a report of their condition. Sam did that on June twenty eighth and wrote a report on July ninth, copied to Rob Vance, I expect to receive the copy. In summary, it says, I find these trees to be in good condition for their size and age. My eight-inch cores indicated eight inches of sound wood present on the north side of each tree. I would recommend further investigation with less invasive tools and techniques. On the basis of Mr. Cavill's assessment, I am today recommending that the city terminate its plan to fellen trees in twenty twenty four. In, say, September twenty five, I suggest that you engage a tree specialist such as Sam to complete the determination by the methods recommended. And my complete assessment of the tree's viability, on which to base our decision to fellen or not, in the fall of twenty twenty five. With regard to preserving the adjacent running track, I'd estimated that a fabric covering about two hundred feet long and seventeen feet wide would be required to protect the track from sap damage. Per my request, Monte Ken was an upholstery owner, North Broadway, has estimated that a synthetic fabric cover, a suitable weight and strength would cost about thirty-eight hundred to manufacture and install. Members of the Montevista Country Club Board have indicated in principle a willingness to pay for the cover, which could be removed for the, for track meets. But at this point, we've hit a snag. The company that just installed the new track has indicated a fabric cover could cause condensation that might be harmful to the track. My discussions with school officials so far has not pointed to a solution, so the question of a cover is still unresolved. That's the status of the issue at present, I appreciate the opportunity for, to provide this update and ask if there are any questions.
The tree, the trees by the tracker.
Say it again.
The trees by, by the track?
The trees are on one side of the fence, the track's just on the other side.
And what kind of trees are those?
Cottonwoods.
Those are cottonwoods also? Are those the two cottonwoods we're talking about?
They're about a hundred years old, and what was the question again?
Those are the same two trees that?
That the city wanted to cut down this year.
And those are the same two?
The same two.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand.
And I'm recommending they not be cut down, they seem to be in good health, in good condition.
But also, any questions?
Okay, thank you, gents.
Thank you.
Charlie, you get, get down there, okay? Do you need assistance?
Say it again.
Are you okay to get set back down?
Oh, yes, I just moved slow, I just moved slower here. I'm really hurrying, but it looks like.
Alrighty. Charles? Charles, I'm not gonna butcher your last name, can I turn notes, notes, sir?
No, Charles is not.
Charles is not here?
No.
Okay. So he's not here to speak? So we have the information in our packet that we can look at?
Yes.
All right, we will move on to, uh, ordinances then. Second reading of ordinance nine twenty eight, and ordinance of the Sid Council, the City of Montevista, Colorado, adopting rules and regulations as guidelines for designating site selection and construction of major new domestic water systems and major extensions of existing domestic water systems and municipal industrial water projects as activities of state interest. Mr. Parrish, address briefly.
Mayor and Council, I don't want to go through everything I did last time, uh, on the first reading of this, uh, because I think I covered it pretty extensively, the reasons behind it, what it says, what it does, it's the water export ordinance, uh, this was really kind of a reinforcement of what, uh, I went to the meeting of the state engineer the other day, uh, the new state engineer, uh, Mr. Olman at, um, Alamosa, and, uh, it's quite an effort to, uh, force any compliance, uh, not only by Cobb, but also by the state engineer's office on any type of, uh, export, uh, effort by anyone to take water out of the valley, so this is the second final reading on that particular ordinance, and if the Council has any questions, but, uh, I covered most of this, so I don't want to do a better deal, so. Not, thank you.
Make the motion to approve ordinance nine twenty eight on second reading.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance nine twenty eight on second reading. Is there any more discussion? Sarah?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve second reading of ordinance nine twenty eight.
Thank you. Contracts, agreements, and leases, approval of Dola grant for golf courts for a hundred and ninety thousand, city manager.
So we've been helping the Montevista Golf Course with their fundraising efforts to build the new clubhouse at the golf course, and, um, we've submitted a Dola grant through the Energy Mental Impact for a hundred and, it's actually two hundred thousand dollars. And that's the max that you can, um, apply for under a tier one, and tier one, it, it's not necessarily a, a done deal, but there's a little bit less requirements as far as you don't have to go up and give a, uh, an in-person presentation, and so it's just decided by staff, so we've been working with Randy Sneed, our representative with Dola, and, and got it submitted, and then the committee meets later in October, and then they'll know in December if they are successful with that funds. They're, they're estimating that the full cost of the clubhouse and the permitting and the utilities and everything, it's gonna be about an eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar facility. So, and that's bare bones, as far as, you know, it's not a lot of glam, glam and glitz and sparkles on it. So they're working very hard, they've got other, some other grants out, and of course, since it's city property, those grants have to be submitted only the city, city's name, and, um, I attended their meeting last night, it went, it went well. The ball, golf board is, you know, they're very, um, they've taken great ownership in what they're doing and what the cause is, and so we're trying to also be as helpful as we can to get this done. And so on the grant, you have to, you have to match it, and so from the fundraising that they've had and the funds that they've received from the county, they're able to show that much of two hundred thousands. So we just need to, I, I need you guys to go ahead and vote and say that you approve us submitting that, and then, um, Randy's gonna check with us, check with me tomorrow, make sure that it did pass or that you didn't have any other concerns.
So, we don't really have the grant, this is submitting the.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, I might have motioned to allow the state manager to submit the grant application.
Second.
Been moved in second to, well, the city manager to, like, for the Dola ground, for the golf course, about a hundred and ninety thousand. Is there any discussion? Sarah?
Counselor Howard?
Yeah.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve to the meeting, Dola grant of golf course for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
No, it, it's for two hundred thousand.
Oh, two hundred, sorry, correction, two hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move back to scheduled appearances. Everybody just give them out. For Charles?
You're up, sir.
You're up, sir.
Thank you.
Please state your name when you're up there and write your name on that piece of paper that's up there, please, sir.
Hi, my name's Charles, the last name's Turner, sir. I live at two fifty-four Franklin Street. My property is a hundred feet from the railroad tracks and a hundred and five feet from the Montevista Skate Park. I had a short meeting with Gigi, DJ, and Director Vance, where I asked them six questions a couple of weeks ago regarding the permanent closure of Franklin Street at Highway one sixty. Question number one, what's the size of the railroad property being transferred to the city? Director Vance answered, from the highway to the dirt. Question number two, is there a, like, a site plan or a survey? Something describing what's going on there? Director Vance answered, no, no site plan, no survey. Question number three, what's the plan for this extra property across from Franklin, across from the skate park? Director Vance answered, no plans, we're gonna close Franklin. So I thought for a moment, question number four, what are the future plans for this extra property by the skate park? Director Vance answered, maybe a parking lot. Question number five, do you have any safety concerns, fire concerns regarding the closure of Franklin? Because it's gonna create a dead end there. And extremely difficult for a fire truck to get in there and turn around. Director Vance answered, I've received rulings from all the safety agencies, police, fire, ambulance, prior to the public hearing, and they have no concerns. Question number six, are you aware that this dirt that you're talking about is Russian railroad right-of-way? DJ said, well, I believe that that's Park Lane. Park Lane, uh, a Montevista roadway. Gigi asked, can you show me Park Lane on the Montevista map up here on my TV, or Rio Grande County map up here on the TV? DJ answered, no, we have some software applications and issues, and, you know, we're not gonna be able to put that up. So I gave him some pictures that showed there's only two residences, my house, and this is Narrows residence across the street that are affected by the dead-end closure permanently of Franklin. Gave him some pictures of my mailbox, my front door, and this fire hydrant that's forty-nine or fifty feet from the front of our two houses. And our mailboxes are there on Franklin. I thank them for their time. Thank them for their service to the community, used up about eleven minutes of their time, and, uh, I have here a list of fifteen agencies that I believe might be affected by the closure of Franklin Street at Highway one sixty. Dale, do you have an attorney here today?
Yes, sir.
And who's that?
Mr. Gene Parrish.
Great, I recommend that, uh, and I believe that it's best community practice to have an attorney confirm that these agencies don't have a problem with the closure of Franklin Street, the Montevista Police Department, two, Montevista Ambulance Service, three, the Montevista Fire Department, four, Colorado Department of Transportation, five, Marsh Elementary Schools, about five hundred feet from there, you know, the United States Postal Service might be concerned. A United Parcel Service delivers to our front yards, FedEx. The Stampede Parade has been using that dirt to stage for two parades for a hundred years. The Rio Grande County Sheriff. There's a church right over here. Cornerstone Christian Church, the nine-one-one dispatch center, I'd be contacted, Waste Management and MDS Trash. I'm not opposed to the closure of Franklin Street, as a matter of fact, I would like to close the other one on the other end of the dirt, Lyle Street, it's a very, very dangerous crossing. Both crossings are very dangerous, a hundred kids went either north or south, or south to north to go to that skate park today. My kitchen window is right there, my dining room is right there, and my office is right there. I see the kids come both from south of the tracks and north of the tracks. Very dangerous place for a property. You know, if you're not gonna close them, they make these things that protect our children. A lot of adults stop there, it's a great community attraction, I think it's a wonderful skate park. People from all states, all counties stop there and skate, great, great deal. But it's five hundred feet approximately from Marsh Elementary School. Dangerous, because the kids are walking, riding bicycles, skateboarding, up to the tracks, using their scooters, a hundred kids a day. I would like to close them both, but it would negatively impact my property values. I don't think Montevista needs any negative publicity regarding the closure of Franklin. But it is a serious safety concern. Thank you, gentlemen, questions?
Is your property two fifty-four Franklin, just to make sure I understand that?
I hope they gave you a pack.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at it, I just.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at the, looking at the information.
I built that big barn there.
Okay.
Spent seventy thousand dollars improving the property fencing, um, you know, I'd love to stay there, but thanks for your.
One, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Just so I do it straight in my head, what, what kind of, what are you, exactly, you advocating, or more, it's like a safe pedestrian crossing across it, or like to, to safety off the railroad tracks from the public?
I would love to see what your plans are.
Okay.
You know, I.
You just wanna see exactly what's coming.
Wouldn't object to whatever you plan to do, but a future parking lot that would probably have to enter onto Highway one sixty.
You just wanna be more informed so that you can make an informed decision.
Community people need to let this community know what you're doing there, it's a, it's a very, very, very dangerous area, and I don't want anything to get run over by a train. They backed that train in there, put the hoppers in front of the engine, they're coming in there at night, all hours, um, just a I wish I lived somewheres else, but it's just a real dangerous, and there's two crossings, obviously. One on each end of my property. That's gonna affect my property values, that's why I want that attorney to have ears up and all of these organizations, I've written letters to most of them, I've talked with CDO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've already held public hearings on this. Um, notifications were sent out, we've got a list approved, all the letters have gone to. Um, I don't recall Charles attending the public hearing that we held on this, and you all had voted to go ahead and close that. The, Rob did check with the school district, as we were concerned about the bus routes, the school district was okay with it. Some of the other, um, suggestions that, that Mr. Um, I don't know how to pronounce your name.
Charlie.
Okay, thank you, Charlie, that proposed, um, I don't believe we contacted all of them, and he had some good suggestions. But at the time, the previous chief of police, Montevista Ambulance, the fire department, um, EMS, there was four, this.
EMS, Fire Department, Montevista Police Department, and at the time, Rio Grande County.
Okay.
They all had knowledge of it, all of them, before I even brought it forward for any type of public, I had approvals from all of the emergency services that said that the closure of those two roads, both Franklin and Faraday, sorry. Um, Robert Vance, Public Works Director, um, that I had all the emergency services that service our city um, had their approval that if we were to close those two crossings at Franklin and Faraday, it would not impact their operations. All of them said it would not, they utilized Lyle, the school district for their bus routes, use the alley between Lyle and Franklin on the north side, no one at all uses Franklin, um, we have talked about two options for the Franklin, at least on our side, if you will, the park side of that intersection, is one, was turning it into a parking lot, two, would be extending the green surface, so it's one continuous park. Um, those were the two options, and those are the two things we had talked about with the railroad. Faraday, our discussion was to completely remove that intersection and roadway and restore it to just that vacant field, that is the plan there. Um, the city, if you will remember, some of you have been on council long enough that you remember that there has been two proposals for Montez Park, one being a splash park on the west side, um, or east side, excuse me, um, and then the other on the west side was a BMX um, of course, connection, push track, um, pump track type, um, area for, for bicyclists. Um, so those were the two ideas, and we're still trying to work through the funding to see if we can get any of those to move forward. Um, as far as have reached. Um, as far as have reached out to C D at the same time as the emergency services. And talk with their folks as far as Randy Ryder on a high level and also. Julie, who is the director of Region Five, on a high level of what that would do to C D. The answer initially was as long as it's behind the curve and out of the C D right of way, it doesn't affect. Um, none of the plans that have been discussed with the railroad includes anything that encroaches into C D. We would literally, if we were to cut and remove the asphalt, it would literally be where their asphalt ends and the city's asphalt starts.
So that would be literally on the north side of the track.
It would be on the north side of the track.
And stuff on the south side of the track.
Would be right at the edge of where the dirt road that we consider to be Park Avenue. Ends, so you would be able to come up Franklin and make a right and continue out on fourth over the Lyle and out on left. All of it includes, everything we planned included no disturbance to any residents of more than one city block.
So. And that. Continues, just to get clear, all that dirt road, that is still. Railroad. Easement, right, because.
Correct, it is still railroad, it's railroad right of way. And then the city, because we have maintained it, would have plane to uh, an easement for use. We would not have right of way, we would have an easement, there's been zero discussion of closing that. Um, if you look at exhibit number five. Um, it shows some encroachments and a trespass on to railroad property. I mean, it was approved and it is what it is, but it does show an encroachment. And trespass. On what is railroad property, also what we consider to be part of. Um, we have tried, um, currently, just so everybody knows. Um, the railroad in order to close a crossing has to go through the P U C. So we have held up. The actual closure until the P U C makes judgment on whether or not they will accept those closures. Um, that is not something the city can initiate. It has to come through the rail. So they are working with their folks to start that process and we're still unclear. If that application has actually been submitted and it can be a long process. The roads will not be closed until we have confirmation from the P U C that it is accepted and and. So I I like I said, right now, we're in holding, we're not doing anything. Roads remain exactly as they are. So sign, we're going to remain up just to kind of keep it in our citizens, you know, so they see it, they recognize it, then it's maybe come. So we are waiting currently for the P U C to make that decision.
Do they have any sense of? P U C's timing?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It can be a long period, is what I've been given.
Yeah.
From three P, including the gentleman from the P U C I reached out to.
Yeah.
It's a process.
Yeah. Anybody else have questions?
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. Sir, I have one follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
If he's uh, he's received opinions from these safety organizations, I would love. Um, for you guys to see a copy of those and maybe even myself. Ruling should be, will be written, I would imagine. State also what I did was verbal. Verbal opinion. I'll hand on that for a moment. At the public hearing, as I recall, and I'm old and I forget. But I believe the. You came up.
Come up here and.
Please, sir. You make it tough on those guys. As I recall, correct me if I'm wrong.
Can you please say?
The evening, Monty Show. English or Spanish? I can't do French. Anyway. The evening of the public hearing, as I recall, the chief came up and said that they had done numbers. As far as the traffic on those roads. And Lyle and one other one were the higher numbers. Franklin was down. And one Faraday was down. Uh, somebody from the uh, ambulance crew, I believe was here. And said they didn't have an issue and someone from the Fire Department came up, they don't have an issue because they all come from the west end. And they shoot down, they never even touched the highway to get to that part of town. So in response, sir. There was formal variance here and they did respond. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Staff proposals, reports and actions, city clerk. That be, you need that or sir?
I just want to go over some of the numbers. And show you a little bit of what took place over the weekend for the Faith and Lee Memorial Park. I just want to put this picture out of the way, sorry. I just wanted to share with you some of the photos and some numbers that we came up with, um, from this Saturday. So we had the poker run. And we had the fundraiser at Chapman Park on the twenty-seventh. And see, this is the, some of the pictures from the poker run. We had quite a few bikes and we had quite a few cars. Um. Think we had a total of seventy cars. And bikes that were at the poker run. And then these are just some pictures that I wanted to share with you that. We had from the event on Saturday. We ended up with thirty-two vendors. The cornhole tournament, we had, um, fifteen. Teams that registered for the cornhole tournament. Um, out of that cornhole tournament, they they gave back four hundred and eighty dollars to the city. Out of the cornhole tournament. We had the little firefighters. That were out there, the Fire Department was out there and they let the kids play with the Fire Department. Sarah, if you could click on the picture with the little guy. Oh, no, it's not going to play, sorry, I had videos on there, but they're not going to play. Um, staff was out there enjoying and having fun as well. Go ahead and click that, the play the unwavement, oh, I see. Fire Department, um, this was a huge hit Saturday, they had. From the little guys all the way up to, um, Patrick, our fire chief, said that he had some seventy-year-old. Ladies out there that were out there. Playing in the water as well. So it was, it was a huge hit. We had eight food trucks that ranged from. Mexican food and then all the way up to sushi, we had the rolling blue chip out there as well. Um, again, this is the spread of vendors that were out there. We had the many cheerleaders out there. We had the, um, horse rides that were out there, they were giving horse rides throughout the park and taking pictures. And then Sarah, if you can play. So we had, we had quite a bit of fun out there on Saturday. Um, so right now overview of the Faith and Lee Veterans Memorial Park fundraiser, we are currently sitting at, um. Twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars with seventy-two bricks ordered. Um, we're still taking brick orders until August twenty-eighth. You can go to polargrading.com slash city of Mona Vista. To order your bricks, you can also come to the city of Mona Vista. Um, pick up an order form, can call our office, we can help you with the orders online. Again, we're taking those orders until August twenty-eighth. Once those orders are completed, we'll place the order and then we'll start laying the bricks. We have Alcon Construction and North River Greathouse that have already been given the okay to start construction out of the park. Um, so here are the current funds that have been raised, these are not set in stone numbers, we're still collecting funds. For the fundraiser, so the beginning funds that we had with the community fund was fifteen thousand. Sponsors. For just that we've collected for just this event was thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars. We had one thousand six seventy-five in donors. Um, vendors, we collected eight hundred and seventy dollars. And we collected one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars at the event itself. Um, totaling fifty-four thousand six hundred and one dollars, again, that doesn't include the money from the bricks. So far, we've only spent two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. In expenses for. What we are purchasing.
That doesn't include labor.
Doesn't include labor. We're not counting labor. Just wanted to thank.
Much fun to be paid for your labor.
There you go.
Um, just put up here all of our sponsors and all of our donors. Just wanted to thank everybody for everything that they've done to help make this event so successful. Um, again, these are our donors and our sponsors. Um, if you haven't drove, noticed, the the banners are hanging on the Faith and Lee Park. There's banners that say thank you and it has all those sponsors and donors, I'm sorry. Um, these are all of our vendors that were out there in our food trucks. And thank you to Public Works and City Call Staff, because without them, this event wouldn't have been so successful. So, thank you, everybody.
That was a good time, you guys did a fantastic job. Kudos, you guys. If anybody wants to know. I took first place in the cornhole, I was the first one to be out.
That one's got to be first.
That's right.
It was fun and staff did a great job and we found. Some of the vendors asked that we do it again and I said no. That's one and done. The city is not in the event business, so. The chamber, if someone else wants to pick it up, we'll hand them our file. Um. I want to thank the members of, in the audience, everybody that's made comments, because that's. That's always helpful and and we do like to hear their opinions. I, in visiting with the, um. The. Golf course, they were asked, I asked them why it was so important that those trees remain there. And, um. They're coming up on their hundredth anniversary. And they said, you know, those trees are probably, are likely older than. We've been around and and so when that land was given to the city, blew apart. So I came up with this great idea that I thought we will have them carved into, to, you know. The one face is the school, have it carved into a pirate. One facing the golf, have it. Carved as a golfer. And then I was told that cottonwoods rot too fast and it wouldn't last, so. I'm not sure yet what we're going to do, but I I am going to continue to visit with the school district and see what's happening. Um, Rob has. Told the two bidders. That we're going to take it down, but right now we're just taking a pause and and that if we proceed, then it will. Likely be. In the winter time. So, let's see. Um, I need you guys to. Appoint a board of adjustments. You passed that ordinance a little while back and we need five people on there, so if someone right now applied for a variance with the city. We don't have that step in place. So I'd like to go ahead and put something in the newspaper and we can see if we can solicit. Somebody that may be interested from that aspect. And. We'll go out and solicit some other names and see. What we can bring forward so you guys can vote on that.
Okay.
So the. We've had. You know, C U Anne Schutz, Colorado, University of Colorado Anne Schutz. Has been working really hard and and working very closely primarily with DJ and then a lady from. S L B Go. On this Lariette Ditch project. And so that was submitted this week. It's a twelve point four million dollar. Project. There is no city match required in it. And we should know by Labor Day if we were successful in that. But it's been interesting, the other attention that just the conversation about that. There's so much. Interest in getting people outdoors and exercising and. You know, pulling away from the computer screens and. Brad, you're outside probably all day, you could probably care less, but. But, um, you know, the importance. It's a one point one trillion dollar industry in this country. Outdoor recreation, so that's anything from walking to, you know, skydiving sort of thing. So it caught the attention of another organization called the Outdoor Recreation Roundtable. And they are based in Washington DC and they, they lobby on behalf of outdoor recreation stuff and and, um. You know, hunting and fishing and snowmobiling, they cover all aspects, they they're not just one sector. And so they had a gentleman named Chris Perkins who. Lives in Jackson Hole, Wyoming. And he came to Mona Vista, he's starting to go around the country and visit some of the communities that have been. Successful with the EPA grant that we received for the recreational economy for rural communities. And so he wanted to come to Mona Vista and see what work we've been doing and and what we've got going. And so he's put together, I haven't officially seen it, but he wrote a letter of support for the Lariette Ditch Project. And, um. He's put together a nice little write-up that. On their website and and talking about Mona Vista and some of the things that we're working on, so. Getting some not- notoriety from places that we wouldn't have have known about or or. Would have thought that they even cared. So we're still working. On the structural engineer for the Valley Free, we haven't found anyone yet that. Is willing to come take a look and help us out, so if you know any structural engineers, please send those names to, um, to Rob. Out there, yeah, out there by the golf course. We have. A well. That has not been used and that water well at one point was used to water the old football. Field. And so it is, it has not been in operation and last year, the. Um. Division of Water Resources wanted to declassify it and take it out of commission. And so we fought back and said, no, we use it, we want to use it, we will use it, just give us a chance. And so we've, uh, asked our. And so we've, uh, asked our engineer. S, S M G, S G M, S G M, they're based in Durango. To take a look at that and see what we can do, because we've got another well then that's a little bit farther. To the west. And. We need to do a little. Work to connect them. I'm not an engineer. Jason, you might know what I'm trying to say. But anyway.
Listen, anyway.
And, and we're going, going to, it'll be submitted to the water court so that we can start using that water, and. One of the pros. For that is, is that if we can use that water then to water the golf course. Then we aren't using treated city water to water the golf course. So, that would be an advantage, and so we're moving forward and working on it. Um, Upper Rio Grande Economic Development, there. Our, remember. Their, uh, our, um, director resigned at the end of June. And we've been the board, and I'm on that board, we are working. With Alamosa County to see if, or excuse me, Alamosa, Rio Grande County, to see if they would. Hire someone full time. To do economic development for South Fork, Del Norte, and Bonavista. With the caveat being that we can, we will raise the salary. By the membership dues that are, are being paid into this. Right now, the city. Of Montevista, as well as Del Norte, we pay in seventy five hundred dollars to be a member. We would likely have to raise that a little bit in order to, to hire somebody. The salary range is probably around the ninety thousand and then plus, um. Their benefits and such. So we're working with the county commissioners to see if they will really take this on and be real pro, proactive about it. Because we wanna hire an economic developer that really is an economic developer. And, um. You know, and, and it's hard to measure the success of that. You know, wait, it takes time to cultivate. Industry and manufacturing and getting them to, to relocate. Or have the, the capital to go ahead and open a new business and that sort of thing, so. More to come. And Lauren was a big part of getting this all started, like twenty years ago, I think, two thousand and four?
Well. Upper Rio Grande was started about two thousand fifteen, about ten years ago. That went up to Rio Grande stuff. And D R G.
Um, I do, let's see, we had, I had a staff meeting today, we went over the, the handbook that you all took a look at. And, um. Think the, I think staff's really pleased with some of the changes that. We are making and, and you all. Nodded and kind of gave your approval on, so we'll move forward with that. We are gonna need to do a finance policy work session. And, because the, and that, that's gonna spark some discussion. Um. The main. We're asking because of inflation and because it's so expensive to. Um. We just can't get things done. With the dollar levels that we have approval on. So we'd like to have that discussion with you to say. Will you go ahead and, and let us have a little bit more leeway as far as. Um, approving smaller projects with the dollar amounts and, um. Just so we can kind of speed up that process, so. There is a meeting on Monday, I believe, for planning and zoning, let's see, so that takes you out.
When is it, Monday?
Yeah. Or Monday or Tuesday.
U R A is Tuesday.
Okay, and U R A is Tuesday.
I won't be here Monday.
Okay.
I'll let me show, the fifth, the one.
Right.
Bow.
The fifth, sixth.
Landing zone is, is a special meeting?
There's a work.
A work session.
When is it?
Do you have it on your calendar?
Monday, the fifth is a work session.
Monday, the fifth, to kind of go over all of the changes. At five thirty?
At five thirty.
Yeah. And then U R A is the next night. So maybe we've. We look at the following week. See if you guys have time to sit down and, and rest and, and comb through that with Judy. Um, and something kind of fun that also happened this last, within the last couple of weeks. One of Xavier, or unless Xavier told you about his, the archery day we had with Kids Connection, do you talk about that? Okay. And today was his last day, and then we've got a new young man coming in with, for AmeriCorps this next week. So that'll be starting. And then just as a shout out, I wanna just publicly thank. Again, the Flower Market. Megan Claycorn, who owns that business. Donate, this is the third year that she has donated all of the flowers that are out at Stampede. Now that's Sky High rather. And so, um. I, I think it really helps enhance the beauty, make it look nice out there, so. And with that, I guess Charlie's telling me I'm done.
Thank you, G G. All right, we'll move to council committee, city commission, council reports. Councilor Watson. Councilor Howard.
Hi, nothing tonight.
So, Renz?
Little shaky at the start, but you said landing.
All right, um. I wanna thank the city staff for what they did, I had a good time, the park was great. And it was not like overcrowded, it was just a steady flow of people the whole day, it was really fun.
The weather held out.
Oh, yeah. And the cornhole people, the guy that came over from Pueblo, he said anytime anybody wants to throw a tournament down there, he's all in. Just letting him know the time, he'll come do it. And pay attention to what's going on in your neighborhoods, watch people walking around. Um, I have had. At my house alone, some, a couple of really strange things happen, so pay attention to the people that are walking around in your neighborhoods. And, uh. Be diligent, keeping an eye on your neighbors, so. With that, we will recess the meeting to August fifteenth at six P M here in coun, uh, council chambers. Thank you all for being here. Great job, sir.